Mark.
Just Chris?
You ready? All right. Alderman Wery, hello? You good? All right. Is he in?
No. Yep, now he is.
All right. All right, good evening and welcome. I want to call to order the meeting of the common council for Tuesday, March 19th. Clerk, how are we doing on the roll call?
Twelve, our present, your honor.
All right, we're all here. Obviously have a quorum, so let's proceed. If you'd all please now rise for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, as we finally enter the new season of spring, a season of warmer weather and more sunshine, let us as city leaders use this season to bring warmth and sunshine to our neighborhoods and to the greater Green Bay community. This past week, many communities experienced severe weather conditions. We're grateful for the many people in public service, protective services, inspection, and the charitable organizations who bestowed the true meaning of a good neighbor and a public servant during these times. Let us as a community and as leaders continue to be a source of safety and rebuilding for the great people of Green Bay. Also during this spring season, we pray for the many college students traveling during this time, many of whom will be using their well-deserved spring break to do good works throughout our community. Bless these students for their good deeds and compassion. As always, we ask for your continued blessing on those who serve the military, especially those serving on the USS Green Bay. We ask this in your name, amen. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the March 5th meeting. It was a motion by Alderman Nicholson and seconded by Alderman Scanell. Anything's here you want to change, correct? Seeing no lights, all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the minutes for the March 5th meeting have been approved. I'm now looking for a motion to approve the agenda. It's a motion by Alderman Scanell, seconded by Alder Person Lefave, to approve the council agenda before you. Anything you want to change here? Seeing no lights, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the agenda before you has been approved for tonight's meeting.
Report by the mayor?
Just a couple things, right? First and foremost, as I mentioned in the invocation, just a big thank you, just to everyone, and council members and city staff who were so compassionate and helpful with this flood that we experienced. We're going to be taking up a motion in just a few minutes on this emergency declaration, but before we do that, I mean, I just, you know, Cheryl and the chief and the chief and so many people really were Green Bay about this whole thing and terrific. And just a couple places that, you know, the chief and I stopped at, but Celestine, help me out here. The gas station. I just want to give Ally at Grand Central Station a shout out. Don Mason and was it Bellevue, just opened up the place, free coffee, places stay warm, you know, we provided transit, but I thought that was awesome. And then U-Haul, that guy stepped up and said, look, you know, he's got two locations in Green Bay and said, you know, free storage. And it was just terrific that they didn't have to do that. We stopped by and thanked them. We invited them to come to the council meeting tonight, but like most people in Green Bay were working, so they couldn't get off work to come here. But I told them I was going to mention it. Oh yeah, Vans, yeah. And I didn't, you talked to him, but we're just so grateful for people who've done that. So I just want to thank them. Secondly, so I'm wrapping up my term here. Our next council meeting is April 1st, right? So that's a Monday, and then we have the election on April 2nd. The new mayor will take over on the 16th, so we're going to have our last council meeting on April 15th. That'll be a Monday, 6 o'clock here. So, and then after that, May 7th. So I've met with, you know, both finalists and I'm happy for both of them and the city will make the right decision. And I'm excited about the transition. So April 1st, April 15th with me, May 7th with the new mayor. That will, yeah, that'll conclude my report. I'll get into that emergency declaration in just a minute.
We're on to announcements.
Okay, hang on a second. Alder Person Lefave?
Yes, on March 30th, at the Brown County Central Library, lower level, the League of Women of Greater Green Bay are sponsoring a program. The film is Oceans, The Mystery of the Missing Plastic. And the program is on plastic and recycling by Mark Walters of the Brown County Resource and Recovery. Questions after. The welcome is at 1 o'clock, film 1:30, and the program at 2:30. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Alderman Steyer?
Thank you, your honor. I'd also like to reiterate and thank, I have several citizens in my district that have actually gone out and helped some of the citizens in the flood areas. So, you know, I think, and I've talked to Cheryl about this as well and Chief Goplin, just talking about the possibility of people coming, stepping up and helping, but I realize it's a safety issue. You know, there's a lot of things that you have to be careful of and such, but just to let you know that there are citizens out there that do care and they want to help. I'd also like to welcome Melinda Roberts. I don't know if she can raise her hand over there. She is a reporter for the Press Times. It's a new newspaper in Green Bay, another newspaper. Remember the days when we had two newspapers? It's called the Press Times. So she'd like to visit with all of you, give your card to her, and she's going to be reporting city hall meetings. So that's all I have. Welcome.
Welcome, Melinda. Okay, clerk.
We're on to emergency declaration discussion with possible action on the declaration of emergency regarding flooding in Green Bay.
So I talked to a few of you this weekend. And this flood really triggered the need for an emergency declaration. And we do this for a couple reasons. One is it allows us to spend emergency dollars, to enact the emergency provisions of closing streets and really puts us in a different mode. It also allows us to petition for additional dollars should we hit certain thresholds. So while we don't have the financing done and what's going to be in contingency and how that's going to be dealt with just yet, it was imperative that the city move into this emergency declaration. I, like I said, I talked to a few of you and it's on here for adoption. We can talk about it. The chief is, can speak on it. Maybe I'll call in Chief Goplin and then Vanessa, and then we'll take council action. So with that, Chief Goplin?
Yeah, the declaration would essentially allow, as Mayor said, to...
Hang on.
I'm sorry, the declaration would allow to re, reach out for federal aid in the event that we reach those thresholds. It would also, it allows for the emergency powers under the emergency operations plan and those outlined in state statute. As said, gives the ability to block roads and basically enact all emergency powers during the course of the emergency. So really, one of the key points is paving the way, if necessary, to receive federal aid and really help to restore the community as fast as we can.
And Trish Chavez, you want to comment on that? We talked a little bit this weekend.
Yes, so just as far as the process goes, the mayor has the authority to declare the disaster by proclamation. The disaster declaration itself is subject to ratification, alteration, modification, or repeal by the governing body, which is what you guys are doing now. And, but the caveat is that subsequent action taken by the governing body does not affect the property of the proclamation. So even if you guys change something now, everything that happened up until this point is still effective.
So that's in your attachment. I don't know that that's on their desk, but it's, it's, it's...
It's in the attachment.
It's in the attachment. So I'm going to, just get some comments. Yeah, I just want to get, Alderman Galvin wanted to say something and, Alderman, go ahead.
Thank you. And this is just piggybacking. The response from the city was, in my estimation, very well coordinated and very well done with a lot of good thought process that was done. Fire Chief Goplin, his boss, Chief Smith, Celestine, Cheryl, whenever I needed information or I had people calling me up with questions, I was able to reach out to any one of them and get answers within just a few minutes. And it sure seemed like to me like they had or were trying to cover all the bases and all the contingencies that could come up as, as this thing progressed and people, as it got worse, and then as they got things under control and they were taking care of people and getting answers to help them out, like picking up the garbage and everything else. I mean, that was something that just took a couple of phone calls and emails and that was figured out. And then when I went out and toured some of the damaged area, talking to residents, some of the stories they had about, especially DPW workers, firemen and policemen, individual stories about how they were helped, either with issues that occurred on their property or when they pointed out problems that neighbors' properties or concerns about neighbors and their welfare. It was just really, it was really neat to see how everything worked and came together. And I mean, we've all seen and read stories about other instances in other communities where things didn't work out quite so well. And although it's been 29 years since we had an incident like this, the city sure seemed prepared and ready to deal with it as it progressed. So I just want to, again, I know other people will thank them, but from all the residents in my district, nothing but good stories about how the city came up and helped out as much as they could during this trying time. Thank you.
All right, thanks. I got to add one story to that. I know, I just want to speak out of order for just one minute. So the chief and I went out on Friday and out in your neck of the woods on Goodell.
Yep.
Went, Mason went to Goodell. And that water was just really rushing. I mean, it was dangerous water. You couldn't like stand there. And this guy's moving out of this house, suitcase and kid and he's like, oh, the mayor's here. Can I get a selfie with you? I'm like, are you kidding me? And he was just so grateful and just wasn't mad. And I'm like, yeah, okay. But I just, he, again, he was appreciative of what we had done up to that point where we're like, look, you got to go. And anyway, I thought, I think that's a memory that I'll carry with me for a long, long time. And I think that was like awesome. So I need a motion then to adopt this emergency declaration from Alder Person Scanell and seconded by Alder Person Dorf. Any other discussion? If you, Alderman Nicholson?
Question, mayor. So let's say if we received money from the federal government, what are we going to use the money for?
Offset expenses. We've been keeping very close track of everything. We had some overtime. The inspectors were in here on Saturday and Sunday. Obviously, our incurring costs with public works and fire and police, so...
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion in a second. I'd like you to use the board on this. We have documented properly. All right. And that passes unanimously and thank you. Keep you posted on our expenses and how they're funded. Okay.
We're on to the report of the Protection and Policy Committee, March 11th, 2019.
All right, so there's a motion by Alderman Scanell, seconded by Alderman Galvin to approve report aye, which is the report of the Protection and Policy Committee. And that was for their meeting held on March 11th. Any items in this report you wish to handle separately? Number four? Okay, hearing on others, all in favor of the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. All items have been approved with the exception of item four. And what are your wishes regarding item four? Motion approved by Alderman Scanell, second by Alderman Stevens. Alderman Steyer?
Thank you, your honor. We talked about human trafficking and a bit. A lieutenant talked about it for a bit. And I just wanted the chief to just kind of reiterate a little bit about where the city is at at this time, dealing with this issue, so.
All right, Chief Smith?
To run item four, the request by Alderman Steyer on the strategies and resources dealing with human trafficking.
Thank you, sir. Well, human trafficking has become a big issue across the country. It's present in every city, probably every small town as well, and Green Bay's no exception. I want people to be assured that we have professional detectives that are working on this. Craig Pacala is our lead detective in these cases. He follows these very, very closely. He works closely with people from the sheriff's department and also from the state DCI. The thing about human trafficking is that in the past, we looked at just prostitution. And I'm sure if you think back 20 or 30 years ago, we saw it as prostitution and we dealt with prostitutes and we catch their pimps once in a while. But I think our thinking as a society and certainly in law enforcement has evolved over the past 10 or 20 years. And now we look at it more of, these are true victims. These are people that are being exploited for two reasons. Mainly for sex, there are young women that are exploited for sex, or they're usually foreign nationals that are exploited for labor. And we don't really see the labor part here in Wisconsin, or certainly not in Green Bay that I've come across in the time I've been here. But we do see women that get brought here for the purposes of sex trafficking. And that comes from Milwaukee generally, Chicago sometimes, some of the bigger cities. And where the individual, commonly known as a pimp, it's still called a pimp, will take this young person, sometimes addicted to drugs, usually underage, and transport them up here for the purposes of sex. In other states, there's a circuit that they run where they'll go from Las Vegas to Los Angeles to San Francisco to San Diego, and they do that. We don't really see that here. It's more isolated cases that we see up here. Detective Pacala, as I said, is our lead on this. Most of the trafficking occurs as a result of things that happen on the internet. And a lot of the internet back and forth, he pays very close attention to that. He does make trafficking arrests. We recently, I guess it was a few months back, got a young woman who was here trafficked up from Milwaukee for the purposes of sexual exploitation. We also have a detective that works on internet crimes against children. Those would be the people that troll the internet, looking for young children to find, meet up, and go have liaisons with. So we're on top of that as well. We do John stings, where we, we will sometimes put an ad out ourself and catch the Johns that come in here to take part in this sex for money. And we work also well with a lot of the nonprofits that try and get the women that are involved in this or the girls in some cases, out of the life, meaning we try and get them a safe spot. We work with iHeart World and some other social service agencies to get them out of this. Detective Pacala is fantastic. He's tireless on this. He knows a lot of the women that get involved in this. He's able to convince some of them to get out. He tracks the rest of them, gets to know them, and know what their activities are, and does everything he can to try and resolve it. But it is something that happens here, happens all over America. Green Bay's no exception. We look at the spas as well. You know, we have several massage parns and spas. We pay attention to those that came recently. The Florida case came to prominence. We pay attention to those. Those are much more tricky and difficult to work, but we have worked those in the past and we pay attention to them as much as we can.
I just had one other point. Thank you for that, chief. And I was just going to ask too, you know, the ordinance that we passed recently, you know, dealing with massage therapy places, have, has there been any study done on that with the police department or law or inspection per se that you know of that is helping with that issue?
You know, not that I know of. I could check with our detectives and I'll shoot you an email back if you'd like to. I can find out what they've done as far as that.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. All right, so we have a motion second to approve item four. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item four has been approved.
Report of the Protection and Policy Committee granting operator licenses.
All right, there's a motion by Alderman Scanell, second by Alderman Nicholson to approve report item J, which is the report of the Protection and Policy Committee granting the operator licenses. Are there any names under this report you wish to abstain from or handle separately? Hearing on all in favor of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And that report's been approved.
Report of the Personnel Committee, March 12th, 2019.
All right, there's a motion by Alderman Scanell, second by Alderman Wery to approve report item K, which is the report of the Personnel Committee for their meeting held on March 12th. Any discussion here? Hearing on all in favor of that item, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, nay. Report K has been approved.
Report of the Improvement and Services Committee, March 7th, 2019, and March 13th, 2019.
There's a motion by Alderman Scanell, second by Alder Person Dorf to approve report L, which is the report of the Improvement and Services Committee, meetings held on March 7th and March 13th. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately? Number one? Okay, hearing on others, all in favor of the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. All items have been approved, the exception of item one. What are your wishes regarding item one? Motion approved by Alderman Scanell? Second by Alderman Wery. Alder Person Dorf?
Thank you. So the reason I've asked this to come to the floor tonight is because I'd like to propose an amendment to it. And I'm going to give a little background as to why. I watched the last two Improvement and Services Committee meetings. And a point of concern for me was the addition of streets and changing of the proposal that Director Grenier had put forth to that committee. I felt very comfortable having Alders ask for streets in their district. And all of us weren't there. And I'm not even sure that any of us should be asking to change a capital improvement plan that's been planned by staff. That's typically what we have voted on. And later on, I'll be presenting a communication regarding policy. But in the meantime, I would like to first ask if Director Grenier would talk about his public works capital improvement program and also about the reason that he might want to put some of the money toward bonding rather than putting it in the capital reserve fund. Director Grenier, can you do that?
Well, I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for as far as a presentation on the program itself.
I'm looking for, I know all the Alders were not at the meeting, and I don't know if all the Alders have watched the meeting. But you had a very good plan that you put in front of the Improvement and Services Committee that was not accepted and it was amended. So can you just hit the high points of the plan? And I also want you to talk to me about why you wanted to put money toward bonding rather than using it right now.
All right, let me, I would be, want to narrow this down just a little bit. I don't really want to go through your whole capital thing. So we want to talk about the amendments?
Okay, we could do that.
I'm just thinking, because you had a plan that was approved and your concern is it was amended.
Okay, that would be my concern. I would like to, you know, to make a motion to approve, take out the words as amended.
I didn't want to interrupt you. I just want to, I don't want Steve going, you know, back to the birth of Christ on this thing.
He doesn't need to do that. But I just want, wanted to be clear that there's a very well-thought-out, comprehensive plan. Maybe that's all we need to say. And I think the important part of it is not placing a capital, money in a capital reserve fund. The reasoning for not doing that.
All right.
Okay, the reasoning, what we're looking at here is originally when we had discussed instituting a vehicle registration fee, based on the number of vehicles that the Department of Motor Vehicles were projecting to be, or what they were reporting, registered using a city of Green Bay address, we anticipated to be able to recover about $2.1 million for vehicle registration fees. I have been in contact with most of the municipalities in the state who have instituted a vehicle registration fee, and they have pretty consistently told me that their experience, that number that's provided by DMV is about 30% over what the actual is. During the first year of instituting that kind of a fee, folks who live in a suburb but have a Green Bay address, okay, so this was consistent in Appleton and some of the other municipalities. Surrounding jurisdictions, those folks correct their address with the DMV pretty quickly when they're going to get charged a fee. And I had a consultation with the finance department. Finance has told us that we are tracking through the first couple of months of the year, instead of about 2.1, we're looking at about $1.3 million in wheel tax revenue. Presuming that more people buy cars in the summer than they do in the winter, we're anticipating those numbers to trend upward a little bit. We're anticipating more in the $1.5 million range, which would be consistent with about a 30% decrease in the number of vehicles as projected by DMV. So with that in mind, we, when we put the financial report as part of the capital improvement plan together, we were anticipating about $1.5 million in vehicle registration fee revenue. For the streets that are in the program this year, about $783,500 would have otherwise been assessed. So those are the assessments that are being offset by that wheel tax revenue. We have about $220,000 worth of rail crossing upgrades, which are in desperate need of being done with no other way to fund it. And that's, again, one of the things that we looked at here. We have been working pretty closely with Canadian National on getting them to take care of some things. But this is above and beyond what CN has planned for the year. And that leaves about $496,500. So again, speaking with the finance department, we are trying to pay cash when we can and offset bonding, which was another item that was listed as a wheel tax revenue, or revenue expenditure line item. In speaking with Director Ellenbacher, there are several things relative to the bonding. And right now, the way this plan sits, we are looking at about six mil, or $4.2 million in levy-supported bonding and a total of about $11.8 million in overall bonding. This could have an impact as we move forward, going into the budget season, which is coming up. I mean, it's really right around the corner. So DPW is trying to be cognizant of that, taking a look at the total amount of outstanding debt that's going to be retired versus new debt coming on, because that has an impact on our ability to go back and utilize unused levy increases from prior years. I believe the last year or two, we have not been able to do that because our total outstanding debt continues to increase. So our thought was to utilize that $496,500 to not bond and try to hold our bonding request in check.
So just to clarify that, in that way, you know, we're trying to get ourselves kind of out of a hole here. We didn't raise taxes for a long time. It's had some consequence. So we'd be able to edge up the levy possibly, if we voted to do that. We'd have the ability to do that because our debt service would not be so high as to prevent us from doing that, if that was...
Well, not only the debt service, the payment on the actual bonding becomes a combination of debt service from the levy and from the other sources that the borrowing's coming from. But my understanding is, and I hope Director Ellenbacher will correct me if I'm wrong here, but the total outstanding debt, if your total outstanding debt increases year to year, you don't, you lose that ability to go back
To go back.
And get that unrealized levy increase. So if you didn't increase your levy to the maximum extent that you could, I believe the time period is five years, that you can go back and do a one-time increase kind of a thing.
So this is kind of a globally, global look, we're helping the entire city by trying to do something like this.
When we prepare a program like this, we're not simply looking at our needs. We are in consultation with other departments around the city, trying to make sure that it is a holistic approach to something.
Okay. All right. I don't want to do the budget tonight, and I get all of this, but I, you are concerned about...
I'm concerned that things were added.
About the amendments. Is that...
I'm concerned that things were added. I want it to go back to the Public Works Capital Improvement Plan as it was presented, to take the amendments out. And then later on, we'll have a discussion in the future about how we're going to structure what streets are and what improvements are made.
All right.
I mean, how it's going to be accepted. But that's not for right now. So for the time being, just to approve the Department of Public Works Capital Improvement Program as originally stated by Director Grenier would be my motion.
It, it is. Really, your motion is to amend this, to remove as amended, but that's going to get confusing.
Is that really, is that...
Well, I, you want to go back to the original.
Right.
The motion on the floor is to approve as amended. So I do think, what's that?
I believe she's looked, point of order, I believe she's looking at receiving, placing, file.
No, she's not. Not at all.
No, 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 no.
Denied, then?
No.
I think she wants to go back to the original. And I think then it was amended at committee.
Right.
And she wants to go back to the original. So really, the proper motion is to amend this, to remove as amended.
Okay, then that's the motion I'm making, to remove as amended.
How else do you want to word it? I mean, she wants to go back to the original.
No, because we need a capital improvement. It's not what I want. I don't want to...
All right. All right.
I just wanna go back to the way it was before additions were made.
Her mo, your motion, I wanna make that, that's gonna get confusing. I think your motion is, should I say to remove as amended, or should I say to adopt the original?
To remove the, or to?
Adopt the original.
To remove the amendments and adopt the original.
Oh, we can do both. How about to, how about I move to approve the original Department of Public Works Capital Improvement Program for 2019 and to remove the amendments?
Point of order, Mayor.
Yep, I wanna get this on, oh, I'll take that first. Go ahead.
It's two different issues. I want separation.
Nope, she's saying the same thing. If you remove the word "as amended," you're back to the original. She just wanted clarification. So what she is recommending, she wants to amend L1 to say, to approve as originally submitted and remove amendments to the Department of Public Works Capital Improvement Plan.
Yeah. See, if you actually mean.
Hold on, let me get this on.
Separation, I mean, I'm requesting separation.
I, yeah, help me, help me with what's to separate.
Well, there's project of Main and Mason, and it's separate from, what's the other one called? Haven?
Yeah, all of them.
Hain. Haven.
And all remaining wheel tax revenue to place in Capital Reserve Fund, so.
I think she wants to remove.
Everything that was changed.
Those were the amendments.
I know, but I mean, I just want separation. We'll vote on, we can vote on each one separate.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Her motion's gonna stand. And he can add those back in if he wants, or if he wants to argue.
Promotion fails, you can.
Correct, because it says that.
Hang on.
I can't hear you.
Okay. So, the Alder Person's motion is to remove amendments and adopt as originally submitted by the Department of Public Works. That's the motion. And there's a second. So that's what we're discussing right now.
Okay, I'm requesting separation. It's two different items that were separately discussed at committee.
She wants to remove all the amendments. If you wanna add them back in.
I wanna take each one separate. Everybody on the council can vote on Main Street corridor near Mason Street, which is separate, completely different from.
I understand.
And it's dealing with the wheel tax. I mean, everything's separate.
There were three amendments to the original submission, right? I mean, you chaired that committee.
Uh huh. I only see two.
I thought there were three.
Okay, what's the third one?
I thought there was a, something added to the Capital Improvement Program, that there was the use of the bonding, and there was something on Main and Mason.
That's two, Mayor.
They wanted the remaining money put into the Capital Reserve Fund.
That's a third separate issue?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm.
Yeah, I need one. Okay, go ahead.
In the spirit of expediency, I would just ask if Alder Dorf would perhaps consider amending her motion to take these items up separately, one at a time, which would still get us to the same end result. One amendment? It's assuming the amendment were to pass. If it doesn't pass, then we're back at square one.
My motion passes. People could then say, I would like to amend and add this back in.
Understand that?
Like that, would that work?
Yeah. Nope. He, no, 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 no. Come on. There's a, there's a motion, the original motion was to approve as amended the Department of Public Works. And then she just said.
And I'm requesting separation, so we can vote on each subject separate.
Of the amendment. And she's like, I don't wanna do that. She put the motion in. If the council supports the amendment, then you can revisit this and add things back in. You can amend it.
Okay, one at a time, I don't.
Vanessa, I think I'm right on this.
We've done that before in 18, 17 years. We always had separation, vote on each separate item. And there's three different items, Mayor.
It's not presented as separate.
Yeah, that's strange. I'll just say that's very strange. I don't know what happened there, but I'm requesting separation.
I'm not on grantee.
Three different items discussed at committee. And this is three separate items right here, all mashed into one. I don't know what happened with that.
And her motion is to go back to the original Public Works Capital Improvement Program. That's her motion.
And I'm requesting separation.
Yeah, I'm saying her motion doesn't have all the separation. If we go back to the original, you wanna add things back in, you can do that. I.
The past, when people make motions, there's always separate, I mean, if someone requests.
That's 'cause there's two or three things in the motion. You've been here one year longer than me. And every time there's separation, one can read this and say, I want these two items separated. There aren't two items. There's one item, the amendment.
Three items, and three separate items.
It's not spelled out.
No, it's, it's.
No, I'm.
As the chairman, it shouldn't have been all mashed together. It should have been separated. It was three separate issues.
Okay, all right, enough.
Have the city council vote on the separation then?
No, that's a ruling by the chair, and then they can challenge the chair. One of those things that you guys do at the county. So I'm not going to allow that. All right?
Okay, you gotta challenge a chair. I want separation.
Do you second the challenge of chair? I don't have it too often here. Hang on. All right. You don't need a second?
Pardon?
You don't need a second?
I don't believe so. Savings on it, but, so I heard a second down.
Yes, it is required.
It is, but you said there wasn't. I just wanna say, right.
Could have been a rich man.
Who made the second?
Alderman Wery. All right, so the Alderman is requesting separation, and I'm saying there's, the items aren't listed to separate, and the motion is to approve the original. So, use the board on this. If you support the chair, you vote yes. No. Hang on. Yeah, yeah, no, 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 you're right. If you support the motion, you vote yes.
Can I just, can I ask you one more thing?
Sure.
This is what I, this is why I'm doing this. I didn't want this to happen. I didn't want Alders being pitted against other Alders, and my district should come first, no, my district should come first. That I want, that's not how we should be deciding things here. And the people sitting in the room, just 'cause they happen to be on the committee, putting forward their streets. I just felt that was so wrong. So that's why I don't want, I don't think they should be separated out. You can try to get them back in, but that's why I'm saying, all of this should go back to the way it was presented, the way we've always done it.
That is your motion. Your motion is to go back to the original. Okay, yes, sir. I didn't know this was on that motion. So the motion, this is on the total, challenge the chair? That's what you wanna speak on?
No.
Okay, that's what we're voting on right now. So if you, I said his motion's out of order, 'cause I think he's separating things that aren't here. And I'm taking your motion on face value to go back to the original. So if you support Alderman Nicholson, you vote yes. If you support the chair, you vote no. And use the board. Yeah, go ahead.
First information, this is just information. It was before she was an Alder Person. I've had this, I presented this Main and Mason Street project over five years ago, and somehow it got lost. I'm just trying to bring it to surface for the second time. Thank you.
I'll remember that.
Sorry, I need to comment on that, you know, just give me a little leeway. The idea of pitting Alders against Alders, that definitely is not anything that happened in Improvement and Services. My Haven Place Road, if you remember, was in the Capital Improvement Plan last year, but because of these special assessments, we delayed it a year. So there was excess revenue from the wheel tax. So at the, at that moment, then I said, why don't we put Haven Place back in? That was a $200,000 project. So it definitely was not any ill intent on anyone on that committee. And I don't want any of the other council members to get that impression. That's not what happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's finish voting here. This is on.
One more, two, three, four.
A yes vote goes with the Alderman, a no vote keeps the motion as one. Yeah. Yeah, we're voting two more votes. Okay, Alderman Scannell, hang on, just Alderman Scannell. What's that? What would you like, do you wanna? To know? Okay, we're pretty strong here. All right, so that motion fails on a vote of eight to four. So the original motion, or the motion by Alder Person Dorf is to adopt as originally submitted and remove the amendments. That's what we're discussing right now. Man, Mike, this thing went out. You wanna raise your hand? I'm sorry. No, I, I. Mike, this went back. Alderman Wery.
Old school, all right.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things to talk about. First, the, you know, Improvement and Services is an open meeting. There's no closed doors. That I remember, we didn't hold it in secret. It was published. Any Alders can come to it. If you don't show up to discuss and debate and enter some input, that's not on the committee, that's on you. So I don't wanna hear that people are being pitted against each other. We did our job. But that's exactly what we did. So that, that's a red herring, to use an old guy Zima, saying, that's a red herring. It's horrible. Now, getting to the item on tonight here, I think all 12 of us, I know all 12 of us over the past three years have heard over and over and over, at every door and every meeting we go to, that roads were the number one issue. We had it pounded into our heads over and over. Unless you didn't campaign, then maybe you didn't hear about it. But I'm pretty sure everybody here did. So you did hear about it. So how short some Alders' memories are. The wheel tax was meant for two things. Number one, eliminate assessments. Done, we did that. Great, good. The second part that we discussed ad infinitum here is do more roadwork. We'll give you more money, but do more roadwork. Don't pay down debt. That's great, that's a nice thing to do, but not with the money for more roads. You go back and tell people that we're not doing extra roads, 'cause we had to blah, blah, this and blah, blah, that. They are gonna come after you. 'Cause that was a tough vote. This was not, this was an evenly split issue, and people begrudgingly said, all right, I'll let you tax me the wheel tax if you do more roads. So be careful with how you proceed on this. And with the wheel tax process, the understanding was that the wheel tax proposal, how to use it, would come to the INS Committee and Council. The committee would review it and tweak it as they saw needed, and then the council would do the same. It wasn't whatever the staff gives you, you will accept, or otherwise requesting their great wisdom and judgment. That's not it at all. They're giving us a suggestion. Then we, as elected officials, take it and tweak it how we think best. It's not our fault that it's coming so late in the year. I've been pushing for months for the wheel tax proposal to come to committee, since late last fall. Get it to committee, so council can discuss it. Sometimes you wonder if that's on purpose, 'cause then it's too late. Oh, you know, we'd like to go back and tweak it, but we, you know, it's almost May, it's almost April. So that's gotta come to us earlier, and it was always meant for have, us to have input. At the committee, we added, we saw there was an extra $500,000, at least, maybe more, maybe a little less, that should have been put to roadwork, quite frankly. And we had one road, we had numerous roads from last year that we didn't do, but one, Hazen Road, was a simple resurfacing. All the plans were done, because we asked staff, and we've been asking staff for quite a while now, what's the next street that could be done? Where's the list? We're never given a list. It's always like some mysterious thing. We even said, can we postpone the meeting an hour? Can we postpone it a day, so you can find this mystery list? Fortunately, Nancy Quirk was at her meeting, and she had a list of proposed roads that we had never seen. So there was some roads on there that, it's the first time I've ever seen it. But fortunately, one of the Aldermen said, hey, you know what? I know a road that's ready to go. Hazen Road, it's about $200,000, according to staff. Perfect, we'll put it back in. Then we said, well, all right, any money that's left over, 'cause we're not sure of the amount, it could be 100, could be two, could be three, could be four, why don't we put that into a reserve fund for next year? So that we can do more roads. We can gear up and really hit it, 'cause, let's face it, I think we can all pick out a half dozen roads in each of our districts that are in horrible shape. I know Hickory Hill in my district, I put it into communication this time. Terrible, it's like a bomb went off. It's terrible. So, that's why we did what we did. There's no pitting people against each other. We simply did our job as, as we saw fit. I don't like how staff always has an excuse why we are, why we can't do more roadwork. It's always about not having enough engineers, they're not trained, we keep losing them, on and on and on. Well, you know, reasons only go so far, but when you have to talk to the average Joe in the city of Green Bay, why we're not doing more roadwork, it's excuses. Period. So, we need to come up with more ways to do this. And our committee has been trying. I mean, we're trying to give more work, more money to get the projects done we need. It's not like we're cutting back money and cutting things down. We wanna do more. So, let's be creative and find a way to do this, 'cause that was our number one imperative we all got. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Yelvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Got some questions here I've been writing down. So Steve, Director Grenier, the only streets added was Hazen Road for this year, and then the Main and Mason Project for next year? Or were there other roads added? I'm sorry, Haven? Haven?
It's actually, it's actually Haven. Please, who's adding that? Sir, if you didn't, Haven Place, the plans are not done. We never did say that. The assumption of the committee was, because it was part of last year's program, that it would be quick and easy to add back in. When that program was, and the action that was taken by the council last year was to hold for consideration for a year, and I believe that year expires in May sometime. So there was no definitive agreement that Haven Place was going back into the program. It was to be discussed again in a year's time to decide whether or not it would go back in. As a result of that, the plans are sitting. We are, we've got our consultant working on them, and ever since this discussion, we put the screws to them and told them we need that done yesterday. But those plans are not done. Yes, the two programs, the two projects that were requested to be added in was a stormwater-related program in the five-year plan in the Main-Mason area, and Haven Place to specifically the 2019 program.
All right, and a number was thrown out, the $200,000. We have this extra money, and they thought they could take $200,000 out of that $496,000 and put it towards Haven. And is that what would have been the assessment of the property owners at one time? Or is that the cost of the entire project?
That was the engineer's estimate from last year, and we did say that we would have to go back, take a look at current bids to reestimate that.
So, so that's what the, the entire project, or just the assessment?
No, that would have been the resurfacing of the project, the project itself, not, not the assessments.
Okay. Did we bond for that money, or were we gonna bond for part of that money, or was it all gonna be?
No, we didn't bond for it last year, because the program, it got dropped.
Okay. And then is this costing us extra money out of our budget this year to accelerate this? And then is this costing us extra money out of our budget this year to accelerate this program? To get it done in time to do the resurfacing?
These program, the, these projects are not part of a budget. This is all part of our bonding cycle, which indirectly becomes, comes back to the budget through the course of debt service, but it's not a direct relationship.
Okay. And Diane, if we follow the original plan, is there a guarantee, or is it a good possibility, or a 50-50 shot, that if we put $496,500 towards debt retirement, that we would lower our debt enough to allow us to access previously unused levy?
Unfortunately, I don't have all the information of what people are asking for, for 2019. I wouldn't be able to put that, I wouldn't be able to give you an answer at this point. Because I don't have the number of how much is getting paid off in '19 versus how much we're requesting in '19. This is just a small, small piece of the 2000, potentially '19 bonding.
Okay. And when would you know how much people are asking for versus how much we're gonna be paying off to know if this would have any kind of impact on our ability to access that unused levy?
The majority of the department heads have already submitted their 2019. I'm literally pulling the numbers together to start the first pass of what 2019 bonding is, and then look at the five-year plan. Most of it has been submitted. DPW is actually one of the largest pieces. We're waiting on, on the numbers, but that's because we were waiting to see whether or not, how it was gonna get approved through council.
Okay. Then, going forward, do you have any idea, if we, if this did reduce our debt, we were able to access that untapped levy from past years, what would that money, extra levy money be used for?
At this point, I do not have that information either. We would, I would have to go back and do the levy limit calculation. I have not, that is not something that I've worked on yet.
Okay.
Audit is next week. We've worked on audit the last couple of weeks.
Alright. My, my problem here is, and it sounds like, I don't know. I'm still trying to figure out this budget and bonding cycle that we're, we're stuck in. But we painted ourselves into a corner over several years, many years, of not raising taxes, using savings, using tax refund to not raise the levy when we should have. So now we're down 4% across the board. We laid off 14 cops. I mean, everyone's taking cuts across the board. And I'd like us to be able to get back to where we were and get beyond that. But it, how, how do we develop a plan? And this, this is where everyone seems to be mystified and not know how this process is taking place, so we can make an educated decision to go with Alder Dorfs or go with the committee's recommendations. And, and this is what I'm having a hard time trying to decide what to, where to go here. And, and how long will it take to find out? I mean, we've been asking this council, at least this new council's been asking for a plan. Something that we can lay out a roadmap, that we can look at and say, if we do A, B, C, and D, at the end of five years or 10 years, this is where we should or hope to be as it pertains to city services, debt retirement, infrastructure repairs. And, and I'm, I hope I'm, I'm not coming down like I'm coming down hard on you, but I don't know, and I, and I look to you experts here to, to guide us.
The expectation is that information was gonna be brought to you when we brought the 2019 bonding request to the finance committee. In, in, in other departments, they take it through their first committee. Once they have theirs approved at their committee level, then they bring it to finance, then we roll it all up. At that point, we were planning to bring this comprehensive plan to you. At this point, we didn't plan to bring that information until probably April or May, because we didn't plan to do a 2019 bonding presentation until after the new mayor is in, in office. So, this, this is pre-empt, this is not, was not part of the timeline. This is, the whole package was going to be presented to you.
But the impression I got from our last meeting was is, this is kinda time-sensitive on this bonding, or isn't it?
I know, I, I don't think it's time-sensitive.
Okay.
No, I don't.
We, in the past.
Steve admit, I ought to be clear on that. He submitted a Public Works Capital Improvement Program.
Right.
That got amended, so, I mean, that's what we're talking about. It's not time-sensitive, this.
Okay.
If I could just, and you're my alderman, and you're an officer, but we don't judge by the number of cops, we judge by our crime rate, which is down.
True, true. Although I'd, I'd love.
Alright, so would I. Alright, go ahead.
Anyway.
Sorry.
So, I. So if there's no rush or no pressure to do this at this time, I'd almost rather wait until we have those reports so that I can make a decision, am I better off putting $496,500 in the debt retirement? Because it would be better for everybody involved in this community to do that? Or are we better off just saying, well, it's not gonna have any effect at all, so let's get more roads done? Which is what, like Alder Weary said, we've been hearing for a long time. And, and that, I guess, is, would go a long way to helping me make a decision. And granted, it's only a $500,000 decision, but if that allows us to raise the levy, to get ourselves out of the corner we're in, I'd be all for that. If it's not, then hey, yeah, let's get more roads done. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's, there's one piece, I guess, as part of this motion, I, I, when we, when we go back to the original motion, which is to amend the amended report, I'm not gonna be in favor of that. I think there are two issues which I feel Alder Dorf raises some legitimate concerns, specifically related to Alders bringing forward particular projects. And I think that, that is one debate to me. The other debate is the Capital Reserve Fund. And at committee, I, I made this motion, it was really because of something that Alder Weary had brought to our attention, which was the $500,000 being applied towards, towards a reduction in, in borrowing, which I want to point out is not interchangeable and is different than a reduction in debt. And I, and I think that's an important piece to talk about. So a couple of things here. One of the reasons that we wanted to create this reserve fund was we wanted to have the ability to check with legal about our city's ability to be able to leverage those excess funds for engineers or consultants to help accelerate the design work that needs to be complete. So if we eliminate that component, we eliminate our ability to check on that. Maybe legal has an answer for me right now, I'm not sure, but that would obviously be a Vanessa shaking her head, no. So, so we'd have to give legal some time to check on that. So I personally would like to preserve that fund, to at least have the ability to, to check on that, because DPW's response to us has been, that is one of the biggest barriers to accelerating the pace of road construction, is that we don't have the engineers to be able to do that upfront work. We've done other things here when it comes to bonding that I feel have been, you know, a lot more irresponsible with bonding. And, and in particular, I think of bonding for vehicles, I think about, you know, bonding for an elevator that didn't get done right away. We, we bonded for something at Bay Beach that, that money sat for a year, and I know that's happened a number of times. Sometimes it's not what we intend. Sometimes it just might be a lack of planning. But this is very intentional and very different, in that we're saying that we passed the wheel tax, and it was with the intent to do more roads. I know that is the only reason that I supported it. And that's not how this, this funding is being leveraged. The reduction in borrowing, again, to me, is a different issue, because what we're saying is that we're not gonna borrow that much in Public Works, but what we're gonna do then is give the ability for other departments to make that borrowing ask. And I personally would not support, and that's the discussion of levy limits, right? I mean, that's the issue here. So if, if, if we're gonna say hypothetically that we've got $20 million that we're gonna put in for a bond request, and we have this half a million dollars in flux, if, if that money is in the bond request and goes to the capital fund, it's guaranteed to go to roads next year. It can't be spent a different way if it's in that capital reserve fund. If we, if we use it to reduce the borrowing, and we still borrow the 20, now that money can go anywhere. So I would rather see it specifically reserved in that capital reserve fund for the purpose that I feel it was intended to do, which was to deliver more roads, more repairs for the residents of our community. So it, one thing that I would maybe ask is a, is a just a procedural question, and, I mean, if we were today, and I'm looking at maybe Diane on this one, if we were today to say, on this particular motion, which again, we're, they are kind of separate issues, but if, if this were to proceed, where we're going to create the capital reserve fund, when the full bonding request comes forward, we would still need, I mean, we could still take it out at that point, could we not? Because essentially what we're doing is we're bonding for that capital reserve fund, so that is still an item. Theoretically, that could be removed later if the council so chose?
I'm just gonna look to Steve, the reserve, was that gonna be coming out of wheel tax money, or was that gonna be coming out of bonding? Steve, Director Grinear?
It was coming out of the wheel tax.
Okay, so we're just letting Public Works then bond the full amount, or $500,000 more than?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Alright, thank you for that clarification. So again, I, I, I'm gonna vote no on this. But if it were to come back to the floor to separate these issues, I think that, again, there's another discussion to be had there, if we wanted to take those items up one at a time. Thank you.
Alderman Van Der List?
Thank you, Mayor. As it's written here, number one, is this what the committee passed? At the Improvement Services Committee? Was this, in other words, without any amendments, is this what was passed?
Right, the, I, what was, Director Grinear submitted a Public Works Capital Improvement Program for 2019, okay? Did you then hold it and then amend it? Is that how the process went? Was the original plan ever passed? Okay, so. Okay, so the director submitted a plan. It got held, and then it got a special meeting and got amended. The motion and a second on the floor is to go back to the original.
I'd like to hear from Alderman Nicholson, how he feels about the proposal of change.
That's fine. How he feels about the amendments?
I mean, you want, you want it to be as written? You said it's written here, number one?
Okay.
And in other words, you're approving what, what Director Grinear proposed, is that correct?
No.
How did, how did it get on the slip here as far as on, on the number one?
Special meeting, right?
Right, the 13th.
Yeah.
You amended it.
Correct. Um, I don't know what to say.
Nothing, we're good. Okay? Mike, I'm gonna throw this thing out. It goes right back to that picture. Anything else, Alderman Van Der List?
No, thank you.
Pam was next. Randy, Alderman Scannell?
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate that the committee wasn't looking to be divisive, but that's exactly what has happened. When you start micromanaging staff, we start, we all wanna be a piece of that, and that's exactly what happened. I have plenty of streets that are in bad shape, that were on capital plans and taken off, and are even, have deteriorated that much more sense. What we need to do is, if we, we want staff to do more streets, we need to go to staff and say, level the playing field, look at all the streets, which ones are the worst? Those are the ones we should do. That would, would, I could support. But everybody, as soon as one Alder pits in a, a street, then I, you know, I feel like, I mean, I think I got the worst street, it's only a block long, but it's basically a gravel road, Augusta, part of Augusta, I think I got the worst street in, in the city. So I mean, I don't wanna, I don't think we should be micromanaging staff and, and making these kinds of pitches. I think if we want more work done, we need to tell staff, we want more work done. Tell us which, which roads we can, you know, are the worst, and, and let's go with that. And as far as, and I appreciate Alder Nicholson's concern about Mason there, but I believe, looking at the minutes, Alder Grinear did say, you know, staff is working on that. I mean, they've done work where they're gonna try and get the water flow off to side streets to help relieve the water issues there. So it's not like staff isn't cognizant of the need there, and aren't, aren't, aren't working on it, aren't focused on it. So I don't think there's any need to make a marker for the future. And as far as setting money aside, you know, instead of into the bonding, can't we decide that at, when we do the bonding? If we wanna, what we wanna do with that money then? And then, we would have staff would have enough time to come forth with more information, and we could decide then what would be best? Instead of trying to make that decision now? It's my pitch for, making the, passing Alder Dorf's amendment as is, and then taking that up when we get to bonding. Then we'll have more information, then we'll know what to do, instead of trying to do that now. So I appreciate the, the committees trying to, to get more work done. I was out there knocking doors too. What I heard mostly was, yes, we want our streets done, but special assessments was really the, the big thing. They wanted to get rid of special assessments. And as far as getting roads done, it's gonna be a long haul. I mean, it took us a long time to get here. It's gonna be a long haul to get her done. I, I think we should take our time, get a comprehensive plan here, have Director Grinear start from scratch. You know, I mean, it used to be where if, when we were doing special assessments, if the constituents on that street said no, or the property owner said no, then, you know, their street wasn't done, and their street was put at the bottom of the pile. I think we just need to scrap all that, look at all the streets, what are the worst ones? Let's go get them. So I, I support Alder Dorf's motion. I appreciate what the committee was trying to do, but I, I think it was a little zealous, and I, I think it does, in effect, end up pitting us against each other, which is, and I think we need to be very careful about micromanaging staff. They need to come and tell us what they need. We need to give them direction. Do we want more roads done? Do we want this money to go to bonding? Do we want, and I think right now, staff isn't ready to tell us that, so I think for now, let's just go back to the original plan. When we get to bonding, we can make some more decisions. So I support the motion.
Alderman Burnett?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good, good discussion all the way around. I agree with the committee's motion, and that's what I'm in support of, but I want to clear up the Haven Place, because it's been thrown out there quite a bit, and I think there's some misunderstanding of what had actually happened. Not sure if everyone had a chance to view the, the meeting or look at the minutes, but how Haven Place came into the discussion last week was Director Grinear presented this capital improvement plan we were looking for, or Alder Nicholson was looking for some changes on a longstanding project that should have been in the rotation that had not yet been. So then my question to Director Grinear was, surely, as you develop this 2019 capital improvement plan, there has to be five streets that, that are pressing needs, that we just didn't have the resources to do this year. So five that were just on the chopping block. Not my intention to uncover that stone to add it to this year, but so that we would know what the priorities are for next year. I did not mention Haven Place. I did not necessarily mention Hillcrest to be put in this year. I understand the motion last year was to hold, and I understand, although I don't necessarily agree with Director Grinear, that that could not have been included in this year's proposal. But how Haven came into play was, we were, we had half a million dollars of revenue for wheel tax. Director, or Alderman Weary really grilled, I guess you would say, Director Grinear to say, there's got to be some street out there, a little, little dead-end street, the little, you know, turnout street that this money could be used for. Director Grinear gave nothing, nothing. The water utility, Nancy Cork was there, and, and one of the issues was, you know, you replace a road, resurface, repay, reconstruct, then you have to consider the water. The water and the sewage. Well, it turns out, if you recall, Haven Place is not connected to city water. So that got me thinking that we could add a $200,000 repair that was on the, on schedule to be done last year with the, with the revenue. Of course, that's all subject to public hearing and notifying the neighbors and property owners in that area, and we go through that process, but earlier tonight, Director Grinear said that, that the work isn't almost done, but I could have sworn, and maybe I heard this wrong, that when we were talking about doing Hillcrest and Haven last year, he said we were 90 to 95% complete with the work. I, I would like Director Grinear to address that, because I don't know if I heard it wrong, or hear it wrong tonight, but how close are we? but how close are we to having the pre-work done for Haven Place?
I would have to have that conversation with the engineering director, Jim Burnett. To give you, to give you a number right now, I don't have that number.
Do you recall improvement in services, the number of 90 to 95% thrown out there?
Not particularly, but it may have been.
Okay, because, you know, if you remember, last year, the public hearing occurred in April, actually, right after the election, but before I was actually serving in the official capacity. I remember going to that meeting at NWTC, it was a public hearing. And at that time, I thought that it was a pretty done deal, but of course, the neighbors objected, especially on Hillcrest, and we kinda combined these two together. So although I respect what Alderman Scannell says, but I don't agree with it. I don't agree that we are pitting things. This was added, it could have been any person's district. We were simply looking for a street that we could do that did not require any work. And above all, one more point, Mayor, and I'll stop, but the, it might not go through in the end anyways because of the public hearing, the citizens who own property there are torn on water. You know, some of them want water, some do not. We have to look at that. And the other part, too, as we speak right now, Village of Hobart is having a public hearing because there are some zoning changes they're making on their end of Haven Place. So it all could be a moot point, but I think we need to keep this in the capital improvement plan because it's a viable project that we could do, rather than just sitting on the money and doing nothing. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Alderman Van Der List, you wanna shut off your light? Alder Person Dorf?
Thank you, Your Honor. So three points that were brought up, one about things being time-sensitive. I know we're not bonding right now. Director Grineer, isn't there something that is time-sensitive? Something about the planning, the engineering, isn't there something you need to know? Could you explain what part is time-sensitive?
We'd like to have an idea of what projects you want us to accomplish this year.
Because?
Otherwise, what are we working on? What streets are we working on?
And then, we're going further along, and we don't have the planning done. Some things are time-sensitive, they're, I mean, you need to know what we're gonna prove you to do.
Correct, we need to know what streets we should be working on, which ones we should be bidding out, which ones we should be designing.
Right, so, and that's separate from bonding. So if this doesn't get dealt with tonight, does that put you behind?
We don't have an approved plan, so we don't have anything to work off of.
Right, so that is time-sensitive, I just wanted to make that point. The second thing, the explanation about Main and Mason, yeah, and that is a horrible intersection, totally. We want that to get better. And you gave a really good explanation on how you're working toward that by doing the feeder streets that are part of the problem, right? And you talked about that. You said you needed to do this side street and this side street, and it's all building up to helping alleviate that. Is it even possible to do Main and Mason all by itself without doing all the other work around it that's gonna alleviate the problem?
There is no project at Main and Mason. There's a project in that corridor, or a series of projects that will contribute toward that corridor.
And that, are you already working on some of those?
Well, again, we just delivered the report documenting what was going on in January. We have reached out, we are trying to get a consultant engaged and under contract to start taking a look at some specific recommendations that were in that report we delivered in January. Yes, we are working towards it.
Okay. And finally, about the concern about the, when can the $500,000 be used to see if it can offset the levy limits? I know that, Director Ellenbacher, you can't tell us that right the second, whether it will or whether it won't, but there was an idea, I'm not even sure, maybe it was Alder Scannell, that said, can't we just keep it? And then if we find, or maybe it was Alder Johnson, you know, we get to bonding, and I hear what you said, then we're just gonna use that money somewhere else. And that was not my intention. My intention was, no, we've used it to alleviate some of the bonding, and therefore, the ability, we have that ability to raise those levy limits and get ourselves, the unused levy limits, get ourselves a little bit out of the hole that we've been digging. And that was, that was my entire reason for bringing that up. So those are the three reasons I'm still standing behind my motion, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor, and as Alder Burnett said, good discussion. Brian, some good points on our capital improvement fund and what this money was originally intended for. I'm a little mystified how we need to have projects approved, and yet there seems to be so many strings involved in having to have projects approved where we don't have all the information we need. All the decisions haven't been made on budgeting and bonding, and I just have a hard time, how do we tell someone to go ahead with numerous projects when there's a whole lot of unanswered questions that goes into that? Because if we were to use the money to offset bonding, and we were able to raise the levy limits, and if the department heads were told to hold down their spending so we could use that extra levy limit to hire the engineers we need, or to do more roads without having to bond, would that be better for this community? Would that be a better use of that wheel tax money? I don't know. Because we can't get those answers. And so I'm gonna make a motion, and I understand some of this is time seven, I'm making a motion that we hold this until we have those answers so we can make a better educated decision going forward.
I'll accept that, just give me a second, 'cause I don't know if we have to hold to a date certain, or if it's like tabling it. Does he wanna hold this for, like, three meetings? No, I'm just kidding, I'm happy to handle this. Hang on one second.
Hold it to a specific time, then, yes, you can, that would take precedence.
Right. So I'm gonna give you, yep, but I need, I need a date or a time or something from the Alderman. If we're gonna hold this, and we're gonna vote, I don't think there's discussion on holds, right?
I would make a...
No. I'm showing my age, man.
Okay, so I'm looking at our next two meetings, April 1st and then April 15th.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then May 7th. It is. I did.
So who do I ask, how long do you think until we can get the answers that I'm asking for?
Anybody you want.
I don't know, Diane, do you know? Do you have an idea? I mean, has this come all down on you? Do you go home crying tonight?
No.
Okay.
Never.
I can tell you exactly how much, I mean, I'm just pulling the numbers now. We're gonna be paying off $14.1 million worth of debt in 2019. So the question is, is can we stay under $14.1 million worth of debt borrowing in 2019 to help get our total standing below? That would include any TIF borrowing, the shipyard, any parking utility, any pavement, any sanitary storm, any general fund.
All of that.
All of that.
And then, at the same time, if we want to further our road projects, then we have to take any excess money, or at least have some plan to take the extra levy that we raised to use it towards our infrastructure of roads and that, hiring the staff we need, whatever it is we need to get more roads done. So when do you think we could have those numbers by? Or a plan, or whatever these, the department heads are asking for?
We can bring you preliminary numbers of the 2019 bonding, I guess, the initial request, probably, early in April, and we can show you what's being paid off.
Okay, and would that go to INS first, and then to, say, the April 15th council meeting? No?
No, because at this point, some of the departments come directly to me. INS takes care of the DPW, sanitary storm, Parks has already approved their CIP, that stuff, his information has been sent to me. I would consolidate it, and I'd bring it to a finance committee meeting.
So we go to finance and then to the April 15th meeting?
Correct. Again, I'm not gonna repeat what the mayor said, but we were gonna let the new mayor help do bonding requests, so we...
Weigh in on it, I mean, I, look, I think that's a lot of elbow room, $14.2 million, but I don't wanna speak for him.
Right.
And I think he should be able to just say, look, you guys, I think we should increase bonding by half a million or reduce it by half a million. I think they gotta live with the bonding, right? That's 20-year borrowing, and I think the new mayor should at least respect him enough to weigh in on that. Look, I'm happy to do the bonding at the next meeting, but I wouldn't have been real happy had you done that to me. So I'm, it's really, it's not...
We can bring drafts of it back in April.
We can bring drafts, but I think final approval he needs to sign off on.
All right, I would be able to live with drafts, but I think it's time this council start taking more interest and having more input into this process as we move forward, so that we're all part of the plan. We're all part of the solution, and like we've talked, there's been a lot of talk here about Alder's trying to put separate projects first and everything else like that, and I can understand that because we're becoming impatient. We've got the people that we answer to asking to have solutions. And I think it's time that we start having a bigger impact on this, and we work more with the mayor moving forward as he moves in, so that we can get some of this stuff, a better understanding of where we're going sooner. I don't like, I feel like I'm last minute on a lot of this stuff, and I'm not getting enough time to hear the full plan as we progress. So I'm asking for this to be held until the April 15th meeting, and all I'm asking for is preliminary bonding projections from the finance department that just help me make a better decision about where I wanna go. Thank you.
Ray, Alderman Steyer, you want a second there?
I did second that.
Okay, well, that's it. Okay, hang on, there's something on there that is no discussion, and am I wrong on, is it tabling?
No, you were right, I was looking at lay on the table.
Lay on the table is no discussion, I'm happy to discuss this. So, all right, Alderman Weary, so the motion is to hold this to get preliminary numbers on April 15th.
Thank you, I am in favor of holding it because, you know, I think we've all seen, we're all pretty frustrated in not getting information. Just have to comment on a few things we've heard tonight, you know, so that they don't just linger on their own. God bless staff, but we are the elected ones, we set the priorities. We can take input, you know, a very intellectual and seasoned people, but we make the decisions. We set the priorities, we don't be given them and just accept them. I'm not here to do that, hope you're not. I agree with Alder Scannell and you, Alder Galvin, on the desire, how we should decide what streets are next are from worst to best, right? And so you'll see the frustration of our committee is that we need a list. I know I haven't been asking for that for a long, long time, and we never get one, and we'd meet with continual resistance and stonewalling on being given any kind of list. And that would have solved, really, the situation last week if we had a list and we said, well, what's the next street? What's the lowest hanging fruit, what's the next one? It was dead air, and that's unfortunate. That needs to change. You wanna say something?
I have a list in my office that rates, you know what? Alderman, I don't know.
All right.
It just rates the streets from one to five.
Well...
And I don't agree with the list, 'cause Spring Street's not on there, but...
Better get it done two weeks.
What I have, I will share with you, but it was a rating that we did, and it could be a little bit dated, but you're entitled to a rating by our engineers.
And then in addition, it'll say, you know, if other work is needed, sewer water, whatever, because that's a big factor.
A big factor, all right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We should hold it because, really, using this half million dollars to reduce borrowing in order to help other departments' budgets is crazy. That's not what we signed up for, and when people find out about that, you can couch it however you want, that you're gonna say down the line, you're gonna help the budget someday, but how do you know what you're gonna use that money for? Next year, there could be, oh my God, something comes up, and you've gotta use the money to save the fire department, which is a very important thing, but now you've set money aside for something other than the roads, which is what we said we wouldn't do. So it really needs to be a segregated fund, and stop, we have to stop it now. If we don't stop robbing Peter now to pay Paul, it's gonna happen every year. We will have created a tax to fix other holes in the budget instead of fixing roads, would that be promised? You know, that's, boy, it's a crazed bureaucratic nonsense, we gotta nip it in the bud, thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Nicholson, this is on the motion to hold this till the 15th.
Yeah, I placed my speaker to talk on something else, but I'll support you, Bill.
All right.
Clarification, I requested 2020, not 2019, there's another mistake in that, in that communication. So be it, but I'll support you, Bill.
All right, thank you. Alderman Steyer, on the motion to hold this till the preliminary numbers till the 15th?
Alder Galvin's statement as well, and all good points made by a lot of folks here tonight, and I guess one of my basic requests is, Alder Weary said, is to see a list. I mean, it would seem simple enough to have that. And I've been on council seven years, and it's been very difficult getting that information. So I don't think the committee had any ulterior motives as well. So I think holding this and getting the correct answers will do us all good. So I'm looking forward to that, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alder Person Dorf on holding this till the 15th?
I just want to make sure there are no unintended consequences for holding this. So I'm gonna ask Director Grineer, what are the consequences of holding this? And please make a good explanation for us.
There are, then say there are, Steve.
You do not have the list they're looking for. What you have is numerical road ratings we do every two years on every street.
That's different, sorry. Only the mayor, I, all right, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm being accused constantly of hiding and delaying.
Yeah, that's why I'm not, and I don't think you are, that's why I said I've got a list, but my list is not exactly what they're looking for.
You have a list of the road ratings for every street completed within the city of Green Bay every two years.
Yes, sir. And that's not what you're looking for. All right.
Are there the unintended consequences of holding this? What's gonna happen if we hold it? Just explain how it affects your department.
I have no idea what's gonna happen.
Oh, come on, Steve, Joshua, come here.
No, 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 wait a minute, it's just, yeah, it, I, no, no, here, don't say that, just, it doesn't change anything. This bonding wasn't gonna happen till the new mayor comes anyway, this doesn't affect...
The bonding's not gonna happen if we don't have an approved plan, we don't, we can't go forward with the same projects.
And they're gonna do final approval of the plan either the 7th or the 21st of May, would be my guess. Right? I mean, I'm not gonna be here, but...
It's the approval of the plan that I can turn about, I know the bond is not yet fully, it's the approval of the plan. When do we need to have that plan approved, so you can do some work this summer?
I brought it forward at this time because I think it's supposed to be approved immediately, but that's the council's decision.
And it would be helpful to me to know why I should vote against holding it then. Why is it more helpful to you to have this approved tonight than it would be in two or three weeks?
Because if we don't have this plan now, if we don't have an approved plan, we don't know what projects we're actually doing in 2019, which means I can't put bids on the street for any of the construction that's contained in that.
Right, and if you can't put bids on, could someone else get those construction people that you wanna get? Because they have put their bids on?
That's, yes.
I think I heard that as I listened to this improvement in services meeting, that the problem with not approving this plan is that we can lose the ability to do some of the construction.
I think I have an idea.
Okay.
I think the council, I mean, you need to work, and you need to get some things going, but do you guys, did your committee agree that everything in there you were okay with, it would just be more? So at least he's got...
That would be great.
You know what I'm saying? He's got some direction, he can get to work, although he's going to Cancun tomorrow, but when he gets back, he can at least, but he can start tomorrow directing staff to work on what's there, and you may be adding more, moving some money around.
So just approve the original plan and then add things.
We're gonna approve this. Are we dead? Okay, well, those streets are already approved. What are we talking about?
Well, I just gotta respect for him, I think he's concerned that there may be an audible, and things may change significantly, and why would he work on something that's going to be taken back? So I think if we could kind of agree that we're gonna hold this until the 15th with the understanding that what has been submitted, the council, I don't know, what's the word? that what has been submitted, the council, I don't know, what's the word? Can live with. I don't want to.
So like going back to the original motion, we just approved the plan he brought forward and then worked?
You don't want to do that. They want to hold.
We're talking about holding.
With the understanding, with the understanding that what was submitted by the director i- is, we're going to act on potentially additional projects as well.
Yes.
Does that help you get people working upstairs? We're not, you don't want to start doing engineering on something that the council's going to yank from you in May. And I understand that. I don't want to do that either. But I think what they're saying is what you submitted, yeah, but we may want to do a little bit more either regarding the funding of the project or adding projects. And look, I, I don't want to get into staffing and all that, but is that enough for you as the director to?
Sure.
Okay.
So explain the motion to me.
Holding it, but we're also approving the cap, the improved capital improvement plan.
Well, hang on. I want to get back to this. I think this is like a good, this is a little bit committee work, but I think what we're, what the motion is, is to hold this for the final plan with the understanding that what has been submitted to date will be acted upon. Look, you're the council.
Yes.
Looking for some answers.
Again.
Got it.
And some of it may come from wheel tax, some of it may come from additional bonding. But, okay, so that is the motion on the floors to hold this until the fifteenth to get further information, knowing that what has been submitted thus far will be acted upon by Public Works. Can you live with that?
Can live with that.
So basically, everything that Steve presented in his plan is going to be accepted and we're going to be looking at those three issues, correct?
In terms of how some of them are funded and, um, maybe adding additional projects. And look, I mean, he's.
All right, yeah.
Okay.
You got everything everybody wanted, correct? You, you okay? No, you just want this? All right, Steve's good. You're good, Mayor? I'm good.
Well, that's all that matters. Okay, a couple more lights on here. I want to just respect everyone's. This is on the, the, the motion is, is presented. Alderman Johnson, did you want to speak to that? All right, Alderman Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think what, what we came to here is a modification of the motion, which I was going to target. But I do have a, just a couple of questions that I would like to have answered. The bonding is coming potentially a month or two after the capital improvement plan is, is approved, right? Uh, if, if someone, whether it's Diana or Director Ellenbeck or Director Grenier, how do you pay for the plan if we haven't done the bonding yet?
Have to pay for the plan. Well, you have to, we'll approve a plan and then we borrow the money. I don't get it.
I mean, is that usually the protocol? I mean, that you have that big of a gap so staff is doing work for potentially two months before we authorize bonding to pay for that work?
You've already said you're going to, uh, oh, okay, you're saying is he working and is Dan Ditchite, are these guys working on stuff that's not bonded for?
Yeah, I, I'm just asking, it's an honest question. I mean, it's, is that typically the protocol? Or do capital improvement plans, it would seem to make sense to me that capital improvement plans would be approved simultaneously with a bond request. And if that's not what we do right now, that, that's fine, but it is an honest question. Maybe, maybe that ought to be a practice we evaluate. And then does that bonding request get bumped up in the future? So I guess, look, I think the answer is obvious, but I just wanted to get that out there. The other question that I have is related to, um, the, the wheel tax. Again, Director Grenier, if you could just give some insight for me here. If, if the creation of the capital reserve fund were not part of this motion, during the bonding request, we could still take up how to utilize that excess funds. Would that be an accurate assessment? Meaning like during the bond request, we could decide if we wanted to create the capital reserve fund or not?
Correct.
Okay. So I mean, if, again, if the motion is to, to hold and we're still going to let staff go to work on everything without approving the plan, it, I mean, it gets at my point, which is going to be to pull that out. But, um, I still would just as soon rather approve the capital plan and then make amendments later if we want to. But if, if everyone's good with that, I guess I'll, I'll support that as well.
You kind of are a little bit. I mean, I want to be clear on this motion. This isn't just holding everything. We're, we're, we're agreeing. I, I kind of said that a number of times. And I want you guys to be clear with that, that we are approving, we are going to revisit the capital improvement plan for DPW, but with the understanding that what has been presented to date is going to be.
Why don't we just make that the motion then? The motion being we're going to approve the capital improvement plan and hold the other three amendments.
You're preaching to the choir. All right, you guys, come on. Let's. The original motion was to just approve the improvement program for twenty nineteen. It's twenty twenty.
Four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars and putting it into bonding. I don't want to make that decision yet.
Okay. Right. Do you want to amend this a little bit? Because I think we are kind of all on the same page in a weird way. So.
How do we word this? We approve?
We want to approve the Department of Public Works Improvement Plan, um, as submitted with the understanding that other projects, um, and, and other input from the council will be reviewed at the April fifteenth meeting. Well, I think we're going to take that right to here. I don't care.
Does that protect what I'm trying to protect?
The bonding is, you guys are, you're going to move money around on bonding, but I'm going to just want to say is, I think you got some room this year.
I'll second that motion.
Who made the motion?
Alder Galvin.
And I can't, so. Nope, he's, his motion was to hold everything until the fifteenth. He's amended that now.
All right.
Okay, so if I'm mending the motion to pass the projects that have been submitted by Department of Public Works, we are going to hold until the fifteenth on the bonding portion of that plan.
The whole capital improvement plan?
Yes.
And then what about those three issues?
And that, well, those three issues are part of that. Because it's all wrapped up in, in, in that together.
You're all right, Doug. Okay.
Do you have a second on that?
Well, I think it's you.
I already seconded it.
Okay, can we vote on this? Is anybody, I don't have any other lights on here. All right, I, there's no other lights, so there's no reason to cut off debate. What's that? No, that's not what she said. All right, you're using the board.
Mayor?
What, yes.
Again, none of this information has been pulled together yet, but Steve's, um, or Director Grenier's request is for eleven million eight hundred, eleven million eight hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. So we are paying off fourteen point one million. That leaves about two point, under three million dollars for the, um, the rest of the departments to, um, bond. That would include any TIFs, any fire, police, park, IT, um, any other changes.
You have no other money coming in to offset that request? Steve?
That's, that's total bonding.
Okay.
Okay, of that bond request, four point two million, four point two million dollars is general obligation levy supported borrowing. One point six one nine is from the sanitary sewer and six million thirty-five thousand comes from the storm sewer. You guys want projects done, we got to pay for them somehow.
No, I, I, that surprised me. You guys get that? I mean, that's right? Right. Okay, I'm going to have to use a board on this because they're going to come back at me. So this is a motion to hold this with the understanding we're approving this. And we're going to take up, uh, amendments to this in principle at the fifteenth meeting and total bonding will be done sometime in May. I mean, that's the gist of what we've been discussing the last hour.
Good night.
With all requests including the DPW capital improvement plan, right now there's a request for twenty-one point three million dollars for two thousand and nineteen. We are paying off fourteen point one. So right now, we would be looking to stay, to try to reuse our total outstanding debt. We would be looking at a reduction of seven, seven million dollars in the two thousand and nineteen bonding request. Knowing that you're approving eleven point eight million.
Well, I haven't seen all the bonding, I haven't even seen all the bonding projects. I don't know what they all are. I mean, we're the ones who said, look, don't, right, it hasn't been pulled together yet. I, come on. We're going to hold this thing and, oh, my God. Yes. Well, we're holding the whole, we're holding anything. It's not just three things. I mean, somebody might come in with something else. He wants to see the, he come, there may be something else besides those three things. We're, we're, we're going to. No, we're approving what's been submitted so far. And then there may be some enhancements, additions. And the fifteenth. Yeah, please, I got a lot of green light. I think you guys are doing this to me so I won't miss my job so much. All right, thank you for voting on that. That passes unanimously. Okay.
We're on to item M, report of the Finance Committee, March twelfth, two thousand and nineteen.
All right, there was a report by, uh, Alderman Nicholson, uh, seconded by Alder Person, uh, LeFave to approve the report of the Finance Committee. It's report M, uh, which is the meeting held on March twelfth. Any items in this report you wish to handle separately? Okay. I'll, I'll get to that. All right, so, uh, motion second to approve all items with the exception of item five. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nays, the ayes have it. Yeah, hang on, I just, item five has a whole lot to do with N one. It's just the timing on that was different and we just, we got to you as soon as. As soon as we could. So Alder Person Dorf is going to make a motion, we're going to take the two together. But it's got to be kind of legal the way we do this, if, if you wish to go into closed session to talk about this.
N one. Closed session to discuss agenda items M five, N one, and N two.
Those are the three closed session items on your agenda. Is there a second to her motion? All right, Alderman Johnson. Okay, and then the reason we're going into closed session. Yeah, she's, she'll read it.
I'm reading it. The council may convene in closed session to discuss agenda items M five, N one, and N two pursuant to, pursuant to sections nineteen point eight five one G, Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of conferring with, I, I'm sorry, I said it wrong. To discuss agenda items M five and N one pursuant to sections nineteen point eight five G, Wisconsin statutes, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. The council will then stay in closed session to discuss agenda item N two pursuant to section nineteen point eight five, um, one E, Wisconsin statutes for the persons, purpose of deliberating or negotiating the sale of public properties, investing of public funds or conducting other specified public businesses necessary for competitive or bargaining reasons. The authority may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five two, Wisconsin statutes, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
All right, so we have a motion to second to go into closed session. She read the language. Do you use the board here? What do you want? Oh, yeah. So we're going into closed session for the five and then N one and two. Yeah, I think staff can be excused. I just, the resolutions, I think, are going to be good. And I, Diana, Cheryl, you guys, a couple of you guys got to stay, but, um, all right. So it's eleven to one, we're in closed session. It's a motion by Alderman Scannell and seconded by Alder Person Dorf to return to, to regular session. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nays, ayes have it. So, uh, we had a motion to go into closed session and discuss items five, N one, and, and two. So I'll entertain a motion regarding the closed session. Pardon me? Right, that's what I would entertain a motion to, um, on item five, which is M five and N one. Someone want to make a motion regarding that?
Make a motion, what are you looking for?
The, the motion's. To move forward with the recommendation as discussed by council in closed session. Now, second, Alderman Stoyer. I want you to use the board on this. Proceed as directed. The council regarding M one and N, M five and N one. All right, that passes on a vote of seven to five. All right, and what are your wishes regarding the other item? Um, we discussed was N two. I think it's to revisit this item at the April first meeting with new information brought by Alderman Nicholson or by, well, maybe that. Okay. So someone's going to make the motion to.
I'll make that motion.
All right, that, that we revisit this item at the April first council meeting as staff and council gathers more information. Okay? So you want to vote on that? Use the board, please, this is. All right, that passes unanimously. All right, clear.
We're on to item O, receive and place on file.
Motion by Alderman Nicholson, second by Alderman Stevens to replace on file, um, item O, which is the report of the building permit report for February and the municipal courts report. Motion is second, any discussion here? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nays, ayes have it. And item O has been approved.
We're on to resolutions. You amend your suspension of the rules, adopt resolutions one through eight, together with one roll call vote.
Right, there's a motion by Alderman Scannell, second by Alder Person Dorf to suspend the rules for that purpose. Uh, all in favor of suspension, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nays, ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Motion to adopt, it be appropriate, by Alder Person Dorf, second by Alderman Scannell. This is resolution, report P is in Patrick, one through eight. Please use the board. Alderman Vanderleest? Thank you. All right, and those pass unanimously. All right, and those pass unanimously.
We're on to referral petitions and communications.
Begin with Alderman Nicholson.
Thank you, Mayor. One for improvement services requesting Main and Mason Street be included in the 2020 capital improvement plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Dorf? Hang on. Alder Person Dorf.
For protection policy, I'm requesting that personnel and policy, or that protection and policy, develop policy with the help of DPW, legal, and other appropriate staff. This policy must be developed so that the special interest and requests of individual alders do not subvert the process of choosing the projects that have been carefully researched by city staff as being appropriate for placement in a five-year plan. Parameters for choosing streets to be repaired, reconstructed, or resurfaced, as well as other infrastructure improvements, should be clearly identified within this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Alderman Burnett?
Yes, thank you. I have a communication to the Protection and Policy Committee.
Hang on, you guys.
That reads, "For the city to develop a resolution or policy and procedure to notify property owners near parcels of land with a pending or approved application to be transferred from fee to trust status. My overarching concern is for the city and the United Nation in goodwill to notify affected property owners of the new governing jurisdiction, code enforcement, and zoning authority of the parcel recently transferred or applied to be transferred and to provide an official forum for public input and comment."
All right, thank you. Chris, do you have any late communications?
No, I do not.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to refer all...
Motion to refer.
By Alderman Scannell, second, Baldorman Nicholson. Item Q to refer all late petitions and communications. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And by Alderman Scannell, second, Baldorman Steyer. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nays, ayes have it. We're adjourned. Andy, I just want to talk to you real quick.